I have to show you a picture or something.
Welcome, everybody. As soon as we get the on-air sign, we'll get started. Dan, thanks for being here tonight. All right, and welcome to City of Xenia City Council Meeting for Thursday, October 28, 2021. This time, we will have an invocation by Pastor Dan Jordan from Xenia Grace Chapel, and followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Mays. Would you please rise?
Father, we thank you for the privilege of being in your presence once again this evening. We thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your faithfulness, your love. We thank you for Jesus who becomes our Savior and is so good to us. Father, we ask that you will be with the city council this evening. We pray, Father, for wisdom and understanding for them. Father, we think of our community, and we ask you that you would be with our first responders. We ask, Lord, for safety and protection upon them, and we thank you, Lord, for them. For our city, our school officials, and teachers, and students, Lord, we continue to bring them to you and ask protection and helps for them. Our churches, our businesses, Lord, our community, Father, we thank you for the City of Xenia. And we ask you, Lord, to be with us in the next few days here as we look to elect officers and officials for our city. We pray, Lord, that, and our school board, we pray, Lord, that you would just give wisdom and understanding. And we just thank you, Lord, for these who are serving. And ask, Lord, again, your blessings and your favor upon them this evening. Thank you, Father, that we can come to you, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dan Jordan, and thank you, Mayor Sarah Mays. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask for the roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Urschel?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Present.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from the October 14, 2021. Regular meeting and special meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. Moved by Councilwoman Dean and seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Thank you. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes at this time? Not seen any?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Madam Law Director, I was not a part of the special meeting, but I was for the regular. Am I able to vote on that?
I can split it.
I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was not a part of the special meeting. I was only a part of the regular meeting. Do we just split it, or can I vote?
Um, I would suggest you abstain from that one.
All right. So at this time, I will accept the motion for the special meeting. And we will be voting on the special meeting minutes at this time. Any changes or corrections? Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Abstain.
President Smith?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next is the regular meeting. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes, please.
I'll move.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Urschel, seconded by the Vice President. Any corrections or changes? Not seen any? Can I get a roll call to accept these minutes, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, and my apologies for the absence at that last meeting. Next on the agenda is special presentations. We had none scheduled for tonight originally, but we have a gentleman in the audience I'm going to invite you at this time, Jerry, if you'd like to come forward and give us your name.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If you all don't remember, I was here a few weeks ago. My name's Jerry Corrigan. And you all managed to accommodate me by putting up a Purple Heart sign in the community. And I've been recently retracing my steps through the communities and the cities and the communities that have, well, just about all of them have, have, like I say, accommodated by putting up the sign. And as doing so, what I did, I mentioned the 13 soldiers that were killed in Afghanistan the day that I was here. And I created a 13-month calendar to commemorate that. And what I'd like to do, I'd like to be able to leave some calendars here to let the mayor and the city council members and the folks here that I have enough calendars to do that. I'd like to leave that with you all. Is that be okay with you all?
Thank you.
I wouldn't think anybody'd be offended.
No.
Thank you.
I won't take up any more of you all's time, but I do appreciate everything that you all give.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, y'all.
Jerry, thank you very much for your service and your kindness to the city. Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome anyone that would care to come to the podium. Under audience comments, give us your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to two to three minutes, please. All right, we're going to move on. First is old business, item one, resolution 2021 dash letter O-O. This is a second reading, authorizing the sale of city-owned property at 677 East Cincinnati Avenue. This was introduced by Councilwoman Dean on October 14.
I would like to move for passage, please.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Dean. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Urschel. Further discussion?
I just wanted to explain that I'm abstaining this evening. I have not participated in the executive session or private discussion about this as this is an extended family member, and that's why I've been abstaining.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Otherwise, we will go for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Abstain.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a public hearing. Resolution 2021 dash P-P is a second reading. This is adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for years 2022 through 2026 for the City of Xenia. This was introduced by Councilman Urschel on October 14.
Great. I'll introduce that again tonight. But move for passage, right?
Yes, move for passage.
Are we having a public discussion time tonight as well? Okay, great.
All right. Move for passage. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we need to get a second first? Okay. So I'll ask for a second.
Send.
Moved by the mayor. All right. So at this time, we're going to open the public hearing and ask anyone that would care to come forward and speak on behalf of the city's capital improvement plan. May come forward at this time, give us your name, address for the record. Don't everybody jump at once. All right. And now, at this time, I will ask anyone who is not in favor of the capital improvement plan. All right. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the capital improvement plan and ask my colleagues if there's any other discussion that they have. Seeing none, we will ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is new business, is resolution 2021 dash letter Q-Q. This is an emergency. This is approving the 2022 employee insurance program, authorizing the city manager to execute those contracts and declaring an emergency. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Typical housekeeping item that we present with to council this time of year is our annual insurance program. And following the endorsement of the city's insurance committee that we just received earlier this week, staff is requesting consideration and approval of the city's insurance program for fiscal year 2022. The insurance committee meets throughout the course of every year. This is a group that we have participation from all of our collective bargaining units and our administrative leadership with the intent that they would monitor insurance claims, that we would look to manage plan design changes, and then certainly to look at recommendations for any program changes for the ensuing year. And so we appreciate this process. This has been a very good process for our organization to get the input and buy-in from all of our collective bargaining groups and all of our employees. The city, of course, has been operating under a self-funded insurance program. This year, the committee is recommending a switch to the Jefferson Health Plan to serve as our insurance administrator. This consortium includes over 24,000 employees and over 200 governmental agencies, and this gives the city a lot more buying power by essentially investing in this pool of entities. And this includes a number of our neighboring communities and regional communities who are participating in the Jefferson Health Plan. The plan has agreed to allow the city to keep its current design and arrangement with custom design benefits, so employees would see no change in coverage or benefits, which we think is important. They're based on the proposal submitted by Jefferson Health Plan, there would be a 7% increase in premium cost over current year. Of course, that is split, that expense, that additional cost is split relative to the individual employee based on their year hired and so forth. So again, both the employee and the city would experience some increase here. This, however, is a significant, significantly lower number than a lot of the quotes that we received, and so we feel it's important to be, the best stewardess we can here, provide a similar level of coverage and protection for our employees and yet minimize the cost for both our employees and the city. The insurance committee is further recommending keeping the same coverage for our dental vision and life, as well as the additional services, which include the teledoc remote consultation services. We want to continue, are recommending to continue our arrangement with enrollment management services, which administers the city's opt-out program and so forth, and helps to manage, really, the enrollment for all of our insurance offerings. Obviously, insurance is a large expenditure for the city, and staff believes that this approach with this program presents the best program coverage for our employees at the most fiscally responsible price point that we think we can attain. So this evening, we are recommending a resolution, which is 2021 Q-Q. We're asking this to be approved as an emergency, and the purpose for that emergency is to allow us to begin that open enrollment process as soon as possible in November, get everything done in November, and then we plan for that switch over in December so that come January 1, that switch over takes place. Through the resolution we've presented, there are multiple actions to this, so I just want to be clear and articulate these. First, if approved, the resolution would authorize us to sign the membership agreement with Jefferson Health Plan, authorize further yearly contribution rates for our HSA to remain at the $1,500 for single option and $3,500 for the other tier options, authorize current working dependent surcharge at the current rates of $200 per day, and the compensation of benefits, the opt-out not to exceed $10,000 for single and $20,000 for family integrated plans, and not to exceed $4,500 for single and $8,500 for families for non-integrated plans. Follow, we would, the resolution would offer health reimbursement arrangement, the HRA for employees enrolled in the true cost plan of $2,000 for single and $4,000 for family, further offer a health reimbursement arrangement or the HRA for employees who opt out to cover claims cost in excess of $2,000 for single and $4,000 for family, not to exceed $66,000, $5,000 for single, and $13,300 for family. Authorize signing of an agreement with the enrollment management services for the administration of our opt-out program as detailed, and finally authorize the signing of the single case agreement negotiated by custom design benefits on behalf of the city. Obviously, there's a lot to this. We've spent some quality time with council over the last couple of years trying to keep you informed on the structure of these plans. Most of the plan structure would continue over as into next year as we've had it this year. The big change with this is essentially enrolling the city with the Jefferson Health Plan, becoming part of that pool. I think it's fair to note that based on how that plan would work, we would anticipate that the city would continue with Jefferson Health Plan at least over the next few years. The advantage that Jefferson Health Plan brings, their approach helps to stabilize a lot of these annual premium increases, and it allows, through that pooling process, to extend that risk over a lot of other pooling partners. The benefit of how we've arranged this is we can continue with a lot of the coverage structure that we have in place today. A lot of this is probably even over my head, so we do have with us tonight our HR director. Jared and Jason both participated in this process, and certainly Ryan can offer insight as well, should you have any specific questions on the plan or the coverage or what changes are taking place. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager or personnel on?
So what do you anticipate would be the numbers of employees that would be opting out of this based upon past experience?
Jackie, you got that? 100?
100.
Which is, you know, it's a pretty significant number of employees. And again, you know, there's lots of public debate in this community about these programs. We feel very, very strong, in particular, working with our insurance benefit consultant, that what we are doing is the best we can do for our employees and is presenting an affordable structure for our community and minimizing a lot of our costs, and one of those components is that opt-out program.
Jackie, what's the, I don't know if there's any broader reason for the opt-out. As you talk to employees, what's your sense of why they choose that?
We've had the opt-out program in place for several years now, and some of the other values the opt-out program brings are situations for employees that may have an adult-dependent child, and they're trying to navigate that Medicaid process. So Enrollment Management Services really has expertise in those areas that we don't really have on staff here. So they're able to identify other alternative means for coverage for individuals on a circumstantial basis, and I think that's been a big value to our employees. In some cases, with a deductible, if they have a life change, a deductible has to be met normally in a calendar year. So if they change coverage in that calendar year to a new plan, the deductible starts over. So Enrollment Management Services works with them to try to do a COBRA option so that they get the best value without jeopardizing and being affiliated with that deductible again. So there's a lot of values beyond just moving the risk off of our plan. It's really finding the best value for our employees.
They're customizing options.
Yes.
And it helps to share the responsibility of paying for insurance with other employers. Prior to us making this move, I think there were about 14 city employees that opted out of our insurance. So there were only about 14 employees who had better options elsewhere. Now with this approach where it's really customized to the employee to make it beneficial for both sides, now you're sharing those costs with other employers. And we haven't run the numbers this year, but the last time we looked at it was like $260,000 that we were saving, obviously net of the opt-out dollars that we're paying.
Right.
When you look at what we otherwise would have been paying in premium for those employees. So it's a significant savings because we're creatively sharing that responsibility with other employers.
Sure.
And just to add to that, I mean, there were employees on our plan that actually had better options. But health insurance is not easy to navigate, so they do what's comfortable. So Enrollment Management Services, they were able to work with those individuals, explain those plans, and realize they really had another option that was more advantageous to them.
Mr. President, I should add two points to that. One, you know, our employee health benefit is competitive, but it is not the best you will find among our regional competitors. And one of the value adds with the approach that we take is that we really are able to customize these solutions and provide, you know, the best level of coverage, the lowest price for our employees, and in some cases, that's through that opt-out arrangement. So it's a value add for us competitively that we do what we are doing to provide a very customized approach. Second, I felt to neglect that we did provide for council this evening the more detailed agenda report that breaks down a lot of these numbers. So again, I didn't reference that specifically, but I wanted for the record just to put that we provided all those numbers, so it gives you an indication of what those, how those numbers break down.
So, I'm sorry, I have a question. Maybe I don't understand, but we have two figures here, two charts, one's the HSA monthly premium, the other's the true cost monthly premium. Do our employees have an option to choose one or the other?
Correct.
Is that what that is?
Yes, we have two separate plan designs, so they can choose what works best for them.
Okay. So they do get a little bit of a savings if they go with true cost?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you remember, that is the negotiated rate option where you have preferred healthcare providers with negotiated rates, and it's just far cheaper. I think it's been a real value to a lot of our employees and certainly to the city.
All right, great. Any other questions tonight?
Thank you.
I've got one more, I'm sorry. The Jefferson Health Plan, are we paying a fee to them, of course, for passing that service over, or is that kind of rolled into their insurance premiums?
There's a TPA fee that's part of that, which is pretty, is pretty normal. So instead of paying the TPA fee to Sun Life, we're paying that to Jefferson Health Plan.
Okay.
Yes.
Jefferson Health Plan is a council of government, so we're just one of many, and so it's not a for-profit organization. They're essentially helping to manage a pool of risk, and they're acting as a stop-loss carrier, whereas we had a different stop-loss carrier on the back end before. So we're sharing that risk with other municipalities. So we're still self-funded in a way.
Right.
But now we're sharing that to kind of eliminate the peaks and the valleys of, you know, your different experience, your different claims from year to year.
Yeah. So they'll, they will still take into consideration our claims data for the individual for the City of Xenia, a portion of that, and a portion of their overall risk, and that's what hopefully will help stabilize the rates from year to year.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's great.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city to act on behalf and accept the employee health insurance program as an emergency. So moved as an emergency by Councilman Scrivens. Do I have a second? Seconded by the Vice President. Thank you. Any other discussion? This time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everyone for taking care of our staff employees. Very important. Our next item under new business is resolution 2021 double R titled an emergency. This is awarding a bid to Technology International Incorporated for the purchase of a tanker trailer and declaring an emergency. Mr. City Manager, could you please explain?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are requesting council approval of the resolution to allow us to purchase the tanker trailer as be for use by the city's wastewater treatment division. The trailer is used to haul sledge, which, of course, is partially processed sewage material from our Brady Run Plant where we partially treat it and then finish that treatment process at the Ford Road Plant. And we found that that's the most cost-effective way of providing our sanitary sewer treatment services as opposed to building out all of that infrastructure at both plants. And we think for the, for the near future, the really, the extended future, really, that this is the most cost-effective approach. In doing so, it is time to replace the tanker trailer. Staff has solicited bids for the replacement of this trailer. We received one bid from Technology International Incorporated for $94,950 with an expected delivery in nine to 11 months. Funds are included in the budget, and the replacement has been planned in our five-year CIP for a while. Due to the current supply chain delays and the need for the replacement of the trailer as soon as possible, we are requesting the council approve this resolution as an emergency this evening, and we feel with the uncertainty of things, if we can cut out a few weeks or even a month in the process, that we're better positioned to get this and get it into our fleet next year. I'm really, it's still probably a year out. So staff is requesting the council pass the purchase as an emergency, the tanker trailer. This would be for the not-to-exceed purchase price of $94,950.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager before we ask for a motion? All right. Motion to award the bid. I'll move that as an emergency. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Keep in mind, this will be probably delivered a year from now, right?
I'd say, honestly, at best.
So what we have will?
Yes, there, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. No one wants to have to buy a truck for sewage, but it's necessary, so thank you very much.
It's just the trailer, actually.
Yeah.
It's no truck.
That's true. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Mr. City Manager, what's the useful life, the expected useful life?
I'm going to defer to the city engineer, public service director for that.
Thank you, sir.
I do know that we've had this particular piece of equipment for quite some time.
Well, it's interesting to say, because we tried to research, we have a fleet maintenance program software package that we're really proud of that really gives us all kinds of data, and guess what? On this vehicle, we couldn't determine an age, so we had to just go the old-fashioned way to talk to the staff members that have been there for a while. So to answer your question, the best I can tell you is it is at least 20 years old, based upon the folks that I can speak with.
So is there an aftermarket for a used?
There is, and we talked about that. So basically, we've got two options for that. Number one, with the folks who we will roll this bid to tonight, we could go to them and say, all right, we got this existing one, why don't you deliver the newer one right there? Do you want to give us a price for it? And it'd be a deduction, basically be like a change order.
Right.
Or, as everyone knows, we've had recent success with the online auction, we could put it out there as well. We've been told that it, right now, it's approximately like $9,500 to $10,000, which is about 10% of the value of the new one, just to give us a ballpark, so that's a nice number to have in our back pocket. That'll help us to decide, well, we're going to respond. Folks first saying, no, we think we can do better by putting of the option, and then we can open it up like that. So it's, we're kind of leaving that flexibility to us for right now?
Appreciate it, Mr. Berger. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just was interested because in my past life, when I had hair, I used to be an inspector, and tanker trucks was one of my inspection items.
Come full circle.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Berger or Mr. Mairman? All right. At this time, we have both, both a motion and a second, and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is resolution 2021, letter S-S, is an introduction. This is authorizing acceptance of the Federal Victims of Crime Act grant and the State Victims Assistant Act grant for years 2022. Madam Law Director, would you like to explain this, please?
Yes, thank you. This is, again, a housekeeping measure. We come to council for this every year. These are funds, the VOKA, which is the Federal Victims of Crime Act, is federal grant funding, the SVAA, State Victims of Crime Act, and these two grants help fund our victim advocate program. As you can see in the cover memo that I presented to you, we started having issues in 2019 with cuts at the federal level to our grant funding. Our grant this year is down $39,758 from what we received last year, which was even less than what we received in the prior year. To give you some background of why these victim advocate services are important, state law requires that the city law department, that we're responsible for prosecutions, we are required to provide prosecution services for any violation under the Ohio Vice Code that occurs in any unincorporated areas of the court's jurisdiction. So any OBI, any assault, any domestic violence, anything that's charged under state law, we are responsible for prosecuting under state law.
Right.
We are very lucky. Green County has been fabulous and has helped fund the prosecutor position. Right now, we split the cost for those position about 50/50. But in providing those prosecution services, in 2017, when Marcy's Law was adopted as part of the state constitution, the provision of services to victims became a constitutional mandate. So for every case that we prosecute, we have to provide victim advocate services on those cases. So while the mandate for what we do has grown, and we expanded it in 2017, we now also provide services for anyone that's been victim of a theft, which were not services that we were providing prior to 2017. We've expanded our services, but the subsidy that we're getting from our grant funding has reduced. So I have been in conversations with both Brent and Jared going forward. When I started in 2017, there were some staffing rearrangements that I made in the victim advocate division that reduced costs rather significantly. I did that not knowing that these grant cuts were, were coming, but that did help set it off. But if they continue to cut our grant funding, then I think we have to look at trying to go back to some of these jurisdictions, townships, for some help in providing these victim advocate services. So that is on our radar. What this resolution does tonight, though, is just authorizes us to accept the grant funding for the 2020 year. And those funds do help set off salaries. The state fund is used mostly for paying for the cell phones for the advocates. There's an emergency fund if we would have a victim that we need to get out of a situation, maybe put in a hotel room, buy clothes, buy groceries. That's really what we use that state funding for. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we allow, under the state law, to recover costs from the unincorporated municipalities?
Currently, no, but as President of the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association, I've started that conversation.
Sure.
Excellent.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
So our budgetary impact on this particular item is $18,787, is that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Scrivens?
I said our budgetary impact on this item is $18,787, is that correct?
Yes, that's our, that's our local match for the grant. Again, that local match is not the full amount that, that the general fund is covering for the program, because these grant funds subsidize that program.
Yeah, I see our funding has gone down significantly from $169, $114, $75, and you expect it to even trend lower.
If you talk to any of our federal representatives, a conversation with them about upping that grant fund back up would be fantastic. And it's not just Ohio, it's across the entire country that they've, they've cut these funds.
Is the advocacy provided only
I'm sorry?
...for those crimes being prosecuted in our municipal court? And let me, let me give you an example. So if we have a citizen that's a victim of a crime that may not be in the jurisdiction of our municipal court, would they have availability of the advocacy?
Not, no. Our advocates only work in the Xenia Municipal Court. The county prosecutor's office has an advocate program. The Fairform Court has an advocate program. So typically, whatever court you're in, the, the law department or the prosecutor's office will have an advocate program built in.
Thank you. I think Councilman Scrivens had some more.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lost that train of thought, waiting around. So who administers our grants? Is that the LEAA or on the federal level?
It, the, the grant itself comes through the Ohio Attorney General's Office.
Okay.
They administer the grant funds and oversee the grant funding. The cut that we should have seen in 2021 was actually much less, because the Ohio Attorney General's Office had money available, and they made up the cut in federal funding for everyone. That was not an option for 2022. But we report to the state Attorney General's Office for anything related with how we use those grant funds.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Anyone else have anything for Madam Law Director tonight? All right, at this time, I will seek an introduction.
So.
Moved by Councilman Scrivens, thank you. Our next item is an administration motion approving the 2021 Heritage Tree nomination. In 2011, the Board for Recreational Arts and Cultural Activities Tree Committee developed the Heritage Tree Program, which approved, which was approved by City Council in 2011. This was to recognize, honor, and foster appreciation of trees on public or private property for their unique history, their shape, size, beauty, and species that have cultural, historical, and aesthetic value. Since that time, 37 nominations for heritage trees have been approved, and plaques denoting pertinent information have been installed near each tree or grove of trees. For 2021, Xenia Tree Committee nominated, and on October 5th, the BRAC organization endorsed one nomination for Heritage Tree Program as follows. A scarlet oak located at 933 Sutton Drive, and the dimensions are 45 inches and height of 60 feet. The canopy spread 70 feet, and the approximate age of the tree is 180 years. Those property owners, Michael and Joanne DeCirchi?
DeCirchi.
DeCirchi?
DeCirchi.
I'm so sorry, if they're watching, my apologies. They have endorsed this nomination. So at this time, I would make a motion to approve the Heritage Tree nomination.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Moved by myself and seconded by the mayor. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item, also an administrative motion, is approving the schedule of bills tonight in the amount of $826,000. Mr. Ryan Duke, could you please explain?
Sure, I would just note that on the bills, about half of that expenditure is related to debt service payment that we're making for facilities, and be happy to answer any other questions you may have for all the bills.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Duke tonight on the schedule of bills? All right, I will seek a motion to pay the bills.
Seven.
Moved by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branum, thank you. If no other discussion at this time, I'll move for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Urschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Appointed Officials Reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Duke. What do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just note that we have a budget and finance page out on our website that has a lot of great information. Just recently updated some of that info, so if anyone's looking for any information related to city finances, we've got all our financial reports out there, links to the Ohio checkbook, copies of our scheduled bills, all that information's out there and available. One of the things that I just updated is a comparison of local government costs in both Green and Montgomery Counties. There's about 24 villages and cities in, in Green and Montgomery Counties, and we compare the tax burden in each of those localities in different iterations. So we're up them as based on the median income and median household value, and then we also look at other parameters, like we may assume $100,000 in income in a $200,000 house, or $40,000 income, $100,000 house. So we have different iterations that we look at to evaluate how each of these municipalities or villages stack up to one another. And out of those 24, Xenia ranks anywhere from second-most affordable to the fourth-most affordable, depending on how you, depending on the assumptions that you plug in. But regardless, our standing is, is quite good when you compare the costs of, of local government here in Xenia compared to those other municipalities. When you look at what the City of Xenia receives per household compared to the other local governments, only the City of Dayton is beneath the City of Xenia as far as the dollars they're receiving per household for all those local services. So that speaks to, you know, how affordable it is to live here in our community and the job that staff does in managing, you know, what's given to us and stewarding those, those dollars well. So I encourage people, if they have any questions about finances, that's a great place to start, going out to our website and reviewing a lot of that information, and then we're more than happy to have conversations with anyone who may have questions about the city finances as well. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Duke? All right, next, Madam Law Director.
Just one thing, and this actually is on behalf of myself and the city clerk. Just a reminder to council and to the public, both your meetings in November fell on holidays, so both meetings in November will be on Tuesdays, the 9th and the 23rd at 6:00 p.m.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have anything for Law Director tonight? No, thank you very much. Thanks for the job that you're doing. Next is Mr. Mayorman, City Manager.
Thank you, sir. I would just piggyback first on the Law Director's comments, remind folks that our businesses to get some observations from them, and we got resoundingly positive feedback. The vendors did extremely well, both food vendors as well as the craft vendors, and many asking for, for the city to commit to next year. The local businesses that participated that we talked to were thrilled with the, the turnout, the event overall, and so again, they are, they're requesting that the city take into consideration trying that again next year. We've also begun some conversation with the organizers of the Oktoberfest event. My intention would be to solicit some conversation with the council next month as to what your priorities, your intentions would be in terms of these community events for next year, so that we can chart a course for what kind of investment you want to make, how many activities, do we replicate all of the activities that we've done this year, or do we go in a different direction? And so I'll be asking the council president for a few minutes, one of your meetings next month, to have that conversation, so we can plan accordingly in the budget. But again, good feedback, and I just want to say a great, a great big thank you to all of the local businesses that participated, the folks at 68 Toys in particular, they did a lot of planning, folks at Thar Bakery did a lot of planning for, for the event, and then some of our local churches as well, and organizations that, that stepped in and helped. And it's worth noting, the free pumpkins that we have for kids that we're decorating, we ran out of those within like the first 45 minutes of a five-hour event. And just a shout out, the local manager of our, of our local Walmart happened to be at the event, heard about this, dispatched some folks, and they brought in about another 200 pumpkins. So, you know, even a large corporate store like Walmart has local people that are running it, that care about the community. So I just want to say thanks to Shane and the folks out there, that does great help. Finally, I just want to remind council, we are working to finalize our public safety report. Do hope to publish that in November, taking a little longer than we anticipated. Got a good review of the, of the study with this public safety committee at their meeting here the other week, and so we'll publish that for all of council here in November. That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for staff, all the work you did for that Oktoberfest. Does anyone have any comments or questions for City Manager tonight?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Hey, so there's been, you know, some discussion about the census findings of the population of the city, so I just, could you give us some feedback from the, from the staff's perspective of that and how they're, they're looking at that?
Yeah, well, we think they're wrong, to be very honest, and, and there's a track record in, in looking at this community in, in the 2010 census. Those numbers were, were revised upward. We anticipate the same thing would happen, and I would anticipate that we'll probably appeal that outcome. Right out of the gate, one of the things is we've done some early analysis, and the more detailed numbers are just now becoming available, and this is way later than the Census Bureau typically produces this information. Typically, it's available in the spring, so they're just now getting information out in the fall due to delays from COVID. One of the things that we know right out of the gate is a key metric that they use in, in population estimates is housing numbers, the number of housing units. They have the city losing several dozen housing units. But what we know locally is that not only have we not lost housing units through demolitions or other purposes, we're hundreds of housing units more than we were at in 2010. Those of you that live in the Sterling Green area can attest to how much housing developments occurred. So when you think about the average number of, of persons per household, if you are four to five, maybe even more, hundred of housing units off from the estimate that they popped to the positive, that the estimate Census Bureau has, well, that, that, again, that's a couple thousand people when you do the math. So again, we will continue to, to evaluate the numbers that the Census Bureau has, has come up with, and there is a process that you can challenge those, and I would anticipate that we would do that. And this is important to get this number right, because it does affect a number of different types of funding that would be made available from the federal government to the city. And, and again, I think just organically, if you live here, you know that we haven't lost 2,000 people in the last, in the last 10 years. I mean, it's, I just think it's pretty apparent. But again, we'll go through the process and try to demonstrate that statistically and, and see what the outcome is with, with the Census Bureau in the months to come.
Great, good. They're also potentially losing two liquor licenses as well, so we need to make sure we get the count right.
Again, there are a number of things tied to local population numbers, and I know you're really concerned about that.
Keeps me awake.
That's right, good, great, thanks, Branum.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Mayorman? All right, moving on to reports, our boards, commissions, and committees. Our first report is Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities, which met on October 5th of this month. I chair that committee. We do have one opening at this time. Am I correct, City Clerk?
Aye.
For a BRAC member?
No.
Not yet, okay. All right, so we had a good meeting. Items that we discussed were the upcoming Hometown Christmas, which has been changed, the name, right, to Christmas at the Station? And that will be scheduled for Friday, December 3rd. That timeframe is from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. with Santa, carriage rides. That will be downtown and to the Bike Depot, Xenia Station. More information will be coming. Our next BRAC meeting's been moved from Election Day, Tuesday, November 2nd, to Monday, November 8th, at 6:00. Items also that we discussed at the BRAC meeting was the tree sale that the city had for the very first time. Trees were sold, picked up as a fundraising event for the Tree Committee. A lot of trees were sold and picked up on Saturday, October 16th. City Clerk, how many trees do you think we sold? A couple hundred, wasn't it?
Ninety-nine trees and 45 trucks.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that was phenomenal for the first time, so I, I can't thank Mr. Nelson King, I don't know if he's watching, but he just pours this into this committee and coordinated that event on behalf of the city. Thank you very much. I saw people actually picking up their trees at the service center. It was, it was phenomenal. And then also, we discussed future plans for next year, future activities. Our next big item will be the Easter egg extravaganza that will be at Shawnee Park in the spring, the Saturday before Easter. And other than that, that's all we had, besides the nomination for the Heritage Tree, which we've already done, so thank you very much. Our next item is Finance and Budget Committee. Also had opportunity to attend that with myself, Vice President Dean, Assistant Finance Director, Mr. Lake, our Finance Director, Mr. Duke, City Manager, Mr. Mayorman, and our Assistant City Manager, Jared Holloway. We had a meeting on October 11th, and we discussed budget, ARPA money disbursement for 2022, and a few other items of concern. But other than that, you'll see the annual budget is presented for our council members right here, take a look at, and that will be voted on by the end of November, is that right?
Yeah, we'll do the temporary in, at your last meeting in December.
Right, thank you very much. So our next item is Public Safety Committee. That was scheduled to meet on October 19th, and that is chaired by Councilman Urschel.
Yeah, this was our inaugural meeting for this committee, and Councilwoman Dean and Councilman Scrivens and I participated in that. We had our fire chief, the police chief, and our Director of Central Communications was there with us, as well as the, the city staff, and so that was, we spent most of our time going over the organizational structure of Central Communications, Fire, Police. We had a quite extensive discussion on the call center volume and where that's been and how that's going to trend as well. And that was important because as we're forming the new contract with the county... which also represents the interests of a number of the municipalities. There's two municipalities we have a separate contract with. The majority of the other municipalities are covered underneath the county as well, too. So great discussion on the current coverage of the fires, of our current fire stations, and some concern with the lack of coverage with the new buildout of some of the subdivisions. What would look like if we moved one of the fire stations in the further west? But then also, some really good discussion in terms of the coordination that's going on between us and the township, between the two chiefs. We have both chiefs there from township as well. And, you know, hopefully, this next year, we can start going down the path of looking at a joint fire district between us and the township, or at least some initial steps. I believe we're there in terms of informal coordination and doing a great job. But I think there's a lot of opportunity for that. So anyways, just wanted to thank the chiefs and the communications director for being there and hosting us and answering the questions. And, you know, I think, like Brent said, the next step will be presenting this to the general council. But we really need to be paying attention to that contract with the county and what that's going to look like. We also had some discussion about the potential of what it might look like to have a county-level call center versus the multiple municipality call centers as well, too. And I really believe this next year, that's something we need to be pursuing actively, too. So.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone have anything for Councilman Urschel on public safety? All right, moving on to Board of Zoning Appeals. Mayor Mays.
Thank you. Our meeting this past Monday was canceled due to lack of agenda items.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have anything regarding BZA for the mayor? All right, next on the agenda is council comments. We'll go ahead and start to my left with Councilwoman Dean.
I don't have anything tonight.
All right, nothing tonight. Councilman Scrivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things. Number one, we want to thank County Commissioner Goo and County Commissioner Peralas, our own Public Service Director and City Engineer, Mr. Chris Berger, County Engineer, Ms. Stephanie Goff. I know I'm going to forget somebody, Councilman Urschel, Mayor Mays, City Manager, Mr. Brent Mayorman, our City Planner, Mr. Brian Fortner. And I sure am going to forget someone. Jared, were you there? Our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Jared Holloway. Everyone was present to dedicate the and Family Mayor Marsha Bayless was present. Everyone was there to help dedicate the Mayor James T. Henry Senior Circle, not only to the family, but to the community. And it was well received. And everybody left with a feeling that we have an amenity that we all could be proud of. We're moving forward in Xenia, even though the lackeys will tell you we're not. So I want to thank everybody for their participation. Thank everybody from the community who showed up and showed their love. And it was just all around a good day. I'm glad to see the construction proceeding on, was it South Columbus Avenue Bridge? And then going across the Shawnee Creek there on South Detroit. See some work being done. So we're moving right along. I did engage in a discussion with County Engineer Goff regarding pedestrian safety on North Columbus Avenue, US 42. It has really no shoulders. And, you know, I've been watching people go up and down that road for a number of years. I saw a person just yesterday pushing a baby cart. And there's no real smooth area. And they have to dodge the oncoming traffic. You always want to walk facing your traffic. So I'd ask her to look at possibility of improvements of the pedestrian walkway there on North Columbus Avenue. And I'd also spoken to Mr. Berger about that, you know, previously. Want to say a shout out to the football teams of the Beville Golden Eagles and the Greenview Rams and the Xenia Buccaneers. Three Green County teams now now going to football playoffs in their respective divisions. So go Rams, go Eagles, and go Bucks. I have four colleagues that are running for office. We want to wish them good luck. And the challengers, we want to wish you good luck. And may the best man and woman win. I see the holiday lights. I see Chief Person has got those started. And we're real happy about that. And everyone can ride by and enjoy another amenity in the city of hospitality. We should be enjoying life. And this is one of the things that we can actually enjoy life with. So I want to thank the chief for his undying devotion and support to that project. Just a reminder that our own Governor Mike DeWine is going to be here in Xenia on November 5th at the chapel at the Legacy Center. So he's there from 10:00 to 11:00. And he's our governor. So that's all I'm saying for that. Want to give a shout out to Councilman Urschel for his leadership in just getting some of the litter and the trash picked up downtown. He didn't just talk about it. He actually did something about it and have a posse of people enlisted to do something with him. So I think we should all congratulate Councilman Urschel on taking the initiative that most of us, we don't do. We just sit back and jawbone and nothing ever gets done. Well, this time, how many bags, sir, have you?
Over 1,100 now.
Now, that's bags of trash, people, solid waste, cluttering our lifestyle. So let's show our love a little bit. And for the City Manager, we still have internments at Proudly? Or we still got them in the queue?
I'm sorry?
Are we interning at Proudly? Or do we still have them in the queue?
We have done one internment. We have multiple additional either sets of remains and some in the process. And I think we're close to having a second group that we would.
I'll talk to you about that after the meeting. And today, our County Commissioners voted down the proposed project for the solar in Green County under the notion of didn't conform to current land use. Well, nothing's going to conform to current land use forever. That's why we get variances. So in case they don't want it, we'll be glad to have that in Green County, in Xenia. And I can recommend, how many acres? 10, 20? I can recommend 33 acres right now that are available. So, you know, let's move forward, folks. Solar's the way to go. And we're going that way, whether or not you like it or not. We're going to have a station around the corner here where you can plug in and get your car charged up. So stay in the past or move to the future. It's your choice. And then finally, Mr. President, we got the Carnegie Library transferred back to us today from our good friends at the County Commission. So now we have more strike force capability and latitude of making, I wouldn't call it an eyesore. It's just a benign neglect property that we have a lot of them. And, you know, I'm part of that gang, too. So we need to get together and take care of what we have. If we just take care of what we have, Xenia's such a beautiful hometown place. And I know our City Manager and the delegation left town this week. And they come back and they find out Xenia is a city of hospitality. You like coming home, don't you?
I know that.
I know that's right. The world's nice, but coming home is great. With that, Mr. President, I yield back now, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Councilman Brown.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Skyline Chili here in town. They're kind of more of a big corporate business that you hear about in different areas. But they had a nice Halloween trick-or-treat. And they also enjoyed, kids could come, dressed up in their costume, could get a free kids meal out of it. So I thought that that was awesome that they're giving back to our local community. And those workers were working like crazy that night. They were running around. The main manager was out cleaning tables. It was like a whole team effort there. So shout out to them. Shout out to Montgomery Insurance. I seen a post online earlier that they donated all of their Cops candy bars to pass out for Halloween, which I think that's awesome. And I'm assuming Blair probably had a hand in that, which she's awesome and can't thank her enough with all that she does to give back to our community. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks.
All right, Councilman Urschel.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on the Traffic Circle dedication. We had Mayor Henry Sun came to speak. And how old was he?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. And I'll tell you, that was one of the most inspirational discussions I've attended in a long time. And just as he recounted his dad's involvement in the city. And he was a councilman at the time, that the city was still segregated. And he became mayor during that time of segregation here in our city. And he mentioned that, he said his dad loved the city. He said the city didn't always love his dad, but his dad loved the city. And he also mentioned that his dad made a point to say, I represent everyone in this city. It's not east side, west side, north side, south side. I'm here for everyone in the city. And they had three generations of their family there for that dedication. And just, I hope we have that recorded somehow, because just understanding the context of the history of that time in our city and one man's willingness to step up and serve, even in a situation where he recounted on the night before the election for mayor, someone threw a brick through his window. And, but he pressed on at that point. And that was just, that was just inspiring, very much so.
Most people didn't know that, if I could.
Right, right. And he also mentioned that the person that walked alongside his dad was the Catholic priest here in town, Catholic father, and encouraged him to step out and be a servant to the community. And he says, so you may know about my dad, but you didn't know about the guy who inspired my dad and encouraged my dad on that. So anyways, I just, that was a highlight of the year, to just be able to be present and hear about that. And wonderful Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I won't say anymore, I'll let the mayor share about that. But tremendous turnout, what an amazing, it was a little bit taste of heaven just to have the broader body of Christ there together and having breakfast with each other. A number of us were able to go to the trick-or-treat with the school system earlier this week. And I, talk about things that are turning the city out. I, you know, for about two hours straight, kids were coming with their families. But what a great event that the schools hosted. And once again, just a great community event for families to come out and hang out with their kids. We had our fire department there and a number of organizations represented with that. And so I just appreciate our city workers that were present at that as well, too. And once again, just a great event there. School Board, I did not make any presentations for the city at the school. I've been going to all the school board meetings this year. And anyways, just, they've got a lot of stuff on their plate. But I think they are looking closely. We talked a little bit about this in our public safety, about having one of our safety officers present at the middle school. I think that's going to be a great opportunity there for us to co-fund that and have that, too. So anyways, looking forward to seeing what comes out next with the middle school design as well, too. So that's all I had for tonight.
All right, thank you, Councilman Urschel. I know you've been busy. At this time, I'll go to Vice President Dean.
Yeah, I don't really have anything else to add tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Dean. Mayor Mays.
I also wanted to say thank you to our city staff for Harvest on Main, specifically Ryan Baker and Christina Schaefer, and just the amount of work that they put into it.
Yes.
Walking all of the businesses locally, contacting them, making sure that they came together. Becky and Russ Hawks at Flower Bakery, Rob and Danielle, I know that's been mentioned. But they also just worked tirelessly to make it such a great event. You mentioned Shane Barker and North Side, their church, Emmanuel Baptist. Just the community volunteering together. It was a great day, it was a fun day.
It was a Hallmark moment.
May not eat pumpkin pie for a long time, but it was still a lot of fun. And those pies were also donated, I believe, through Walmart. So they really did a lot, thank you. On the 19th, I had a chance to meet with the CEO, CFO, President of Athletes in Action. Our City Manager was there, Steve Brodsky. They are very excited that the Wooden Family Field House is fully funded. And they plan to break ground in the spring of 2022. It's just really exciting to hear the plans that they have. You know, they are already bringing in about 150,000 unique visitors to Xenia every year. And over the next five years, they anticipate that going to 450,000.
Yes.
So one of the reasons we had that meeting is they wanted to share their vision. And then we had a chance to bring Larry Dillon and Jordan to the table, introduce them, connect them, and start talking about how does that change our market? What does that look like? What are some ways that we can move forward and just have that positive momentum together? So that was just such a great meeting. And I just, as a, on a personal side note, my nephew is here in town from Illinois. They're participating in a soccer tournament out at the fields. There's, they played a team from New Jersey today. They've played a team from Missouri, Cincinnati. They're all staying in the area. They're out at Hampton Inn, ate at Aqualibes tonight, got pizza locally last night. And it's what they're doing out there. And as I was there on the fields watching it and just kind of, I won't lie, I giggled a few times, even though we were losing, it's okay. But it was very exciting just to see people coming into our city and enjoying what's going on here. So just congratulations to them and their team. The 22nd was the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. And it truly was a great morning. About 230 people came out, business and faith community, coming together to pray for our community and pray for Xenia, pray for our state and our country. Really, just, it was very moving. Greg Delaney did a phenomenal job speaking, sharing his personal story and being very vulnerable and encouraging us to share our story and just loving our community well and seeing us come together and care for each other. Christian Men's Fellowship puts this on every year. I want to give a personal shout out to Bruce Pickleheimer, John Sheer, Larry Silvers, Bob Altec, and Kent Hill. Those gentlemen were very hard to put this together. They put a lot of time and effort into it. And it really does, it shows when you come into that breakfast and just have a time to be together in one goal. As Councilman Scrivens mentioned, the James T. Henry Senior Dedication was that same day. Mr. Henry Jr. spoke, but there was also a James Henry III and a James Henry IV there.
Right.
And again, as you were just saying, it was so inspirational. It was really amazing to see the generations come together, traveled up from, I believe, South Carolina or North Carolina, and then also from Milwaukee. So coming here, they were very excited to see the city again and see what's going on here. They, very encouraging morning.
Can I just interrupt? And some were there from Raleigh, North Carolina.
North Carolina, yes, definitely. The schools' trunk-or-treat, it was kids lined up for blocks. And what a really positive event. Had a chance to talk to a lot of parents and just have a lot of fun. The Dare Truck was also there, along with our firefighter. So thanks to Jackie and being out there with the Dare Truck. Yesterday, the Marauder Battalion, the ROTC Marauder Battalion, was out at the Colonel Young home. And they were doing a exercise with two of the Black Hawk helicopters. So it was, I did not get to fly one. I won't lie, I was very disappointed. But it was really amazing to see the training that they were doing and what they, they brought, the battalion's made up of students from Central State, Wilberforce, Wittenburg, and Cedarville. So seeing them come in and have training, watching them get up and go and do that. And just really excited to see the property there being used at this level. They have a lot of plans to work with the ROTC locally. They have some really great ideas. And they're just developing a great use of that property. And then last, I just wanted to extend my condolences to the family of Aaron Kim and Xenia Chinanen. That's a very felt loss in our community. Mr. Kim is
Oh, Aaron's dead?
Yeah, he passed earlier this weekend. That's a person who cared very deeply for Xenia.
Yeah.
And not just with his restaurant, but with his prayers and the way he loved this community. So my condolences to the family. And that is all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor Mays. I know you've been really busy and appreciate everything that you're doing. Just a few things, just like to remind the public that Beggars Night is this Sunday, October 31st, that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., rain or shine. So I suggest have your porch lights on if you're going to participate. Keep an eye on your kids. If you're driving through town, residential areas especially, just watch where you're going, look out for those little kids. Just a fun, fun event. And like to echo on what the mayor said. I'd like to thank Christie Creel from Xenia Community Schools for putting together the trunk-or-treat event at Shawnee Elementary last, this past Tuesday. My company was, had the opportunity to be next to the Dare Truck. And that was fun. To tell you how many kids, we gave away 1,000 little containers of Play-Doh. And it, just tons of businesses were there, partners with Xenia Community.
and it, just tons of businesses were there, partners with Zonia Community Schools, and it was just a lot of fun. Lots of candy given out, and they had to make some candy runs. There's just that many kids that just, they just circle through for two hours, a little over two hours. That was from 5:30 to 7:30. So again, thanks to Zonia Community Schools for that. Also, my condolences to Aaron Kim and Zonia China Inn and their staff. What a huge loss that we have in our community. That's the excellent restaurant. I didn't eat it enough. I wish I could have had more, and I know his passing is sad, so prayers to the family, and again, the staff there. Also like to offer my condolences to Northside Christian Church and their family members. They lost Carol Demet last week. Carol used to run the sound system and help direct the plays when I was involved in the Christmas and Easter musicals at Northside. Northside is, was home to my family for 17 years. That little church is the reason why my wife and kids, we moved to the Zonia community, and just a huge loss for, for them, but we know Carol's in a lot better place, so. Also reminder that our next council meeting will be Tuesday, November 9th, 6:00, and our meeting in November, the second meeting will be on Tuesday, November 23rd, at 6:00 here as well, due to the holidays. So again, like to thank everyone that's watching tonight, like to thank those in the audience that are here. Like to remind everyone, Election Day, Tuesday, November 2nd. I think the polls are open 6:30 to 7:30, correct me if I'm wrong, is that right? And early voting has already begun, so you're able to do that. Please exercise your right to vote. That's just a sacred right that we have here in our country, and I would encourage everyone to please do that and continue to make Zonia a city hospitality by passing on kindness every day. Thank you for watching, have a great night.
We already signed off. We haven't asked for adjournment yet.
Oh, yes, motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, I'd just like to have an addendum. For those who said that the city was not in good financial shape, this, we have an audience award here, and our Finance Director accepted it, the city is in fine shape. Don't believe what you hear, that the city's not in good shape. Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, I'll move for adjournment.
Okay, a motion to adjourn by Councilman Scrivens. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any other discussion? So I cut it short. I do that all the time. All right, motion called, please.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Urschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Jared, thank you for that.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Hey, I got my t-shirt.
That part is, I can't do that tonight because I couldn't finish an essay.